Good evening, welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission meeting of July 10th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Commissioner Grissom, would you take role, please?
Sure, Chairperson Larry Fox.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Jeff Newsom, absent. Secretary Larry Hopkin is absent. Michael Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Here.
Keith Roy is absent. I'm here. And then our Planner, Director of Planning, David Campbell, is here.
All right. Thank you. Next up, approval of our meeting agenda.
I move to approve the meeting agenda of the Planning Commission for July 10th, 2014.
I second. A motion to approve from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, motion carries. Next up, approval of our meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 8th, 2014.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Call to the public, we don't have any other than our applicant. Public hearing, none, we're up to item 8A, this is site plan application number 526 for the Stone Pro expansion. What we'll do is turn it over to David, our planner, and let him give us a briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant this evening is Andrew Belcher, the owner of Stone Pro, and he's represented this evening by his project manager and builder, Stan Poloski. What the applicant proposes to do on their property located at 800 South Old US 23, the Stone Pro business, is construct a new 48-square-foot storage building on the south side of the existing site, the existing building, the existing parking lot. In addition to the proposed new building, the applicant also proposes to do some improvements to the face of the existing commercial building that's on the site that was approved, don't have it in front of me, I believe it was early 90s. The Planning Department did a review of the site plan submitted by Mr. Poloski, and our review letter is included in your Planning Commission Agenda Packet dated June 26, 2014. In that letter, the Planning Department recommends approval of the site plan application number 526 so long as the Planning Commission can make a determination on a host of items. The reason there's a host of items in this case is because this is an existing site that was built prior to a lot of the current zoning ordinance standards, the existing site is not fully in compliance with today's standards. And when we say in compliance, we talk about things like current standards for landscaping, current standards for lighting, current standards for building design and architecture and building materials, current standards for parking lot design and construction. However, oftentimes in cases like these where we have an existing commercial site that isn't up to current standards and they come to the Township, to the Planning Department, to the Planning Commission looking to do an improvement, the job of the Township and the Planning Commission is to try to find a reasonable balance of what the applicant proposes to do relative to the existing conditions on site, and try to bring the site into reasonable compliance with the current standards of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the applicant to make the improvement necessary, an improvement that the Township can agree, we want to see improvements on some of these non-compliance sites. But we also understand that requiring an applicant to bring a site into full compliance may be cost prohibitive, and when that happens, then no one may ever want to make any improvements anywhere, and that's not a good solution either. So, there needs to be a balance of what we expect from the applicant in proportion to what they're seeking approval for, and that's a big part of what the Planning Commission has to make some decisions on here tonight. I know in the past, Mr. Chair, we've gone through my letter point by point, and I don't know if this is an evening where you want to hear from the applicant first, or if you want me to dive into my letter and some of the things that we discussed.
If you want to do the flyover type of thing like we've done, and then we'll bring the applicant up, maybe then we'll go through the letter point by point after that.
Sure, so some of the conditions I speak to that would need to be addressed if the Planning Commission were to take action on this plan here this evening or at a later meeting, would be the proposed new construction, the new 48-square-foot storage building on the south side of the site.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred, what did I say? Forty-eight? That'd be a small building. Forty-eight square hundred, forty-eight hundred square feet, thank you. The building materials proposed for the proposed building are not in full compliance with the building materials standards of Section 5.24 of the zoning ordinance. Because this site is located along the old US 23 frontage, it is required to meet the architectural and building materials standards for Group 1. Group 1 is all the properties along Old 23 and along M 59. And that means we want to see a lot of brick and a lot of stone and a lot of quality materials, and we want to see windows. In this case, what the applicant is proposing is a storage building consisting primarily of standing seam metal siding. They are proposing, I think, a four-foot stone base around the majority of the structure, of a quality cultured stone around the base. And in addition to that, the applicant is also proposing to put that same stone facade base along the front of the existing building to try to tie them together. So you would be seeing an improvement to the existing building in addition to the stone around the base of the proposed building. That all being said, part of what the Planning Commission would have to make a decision on this evening is whether or not to grant a architectural waiver, facade waiver, to the applicant. The applicant has formally requested that waiver in a letter received today, dated June 10th, or excuse me, July 10th, and hopefully you all have that in front of you. So the process would be the applicant formally requests that waiver, and you, the Planning Commission, would make the determination of whether or not to grant that waiver. The next determination that the Planning Commission would need to discuss involves a number of issues, including the existing and then proposed landscaping and screening on the current site, the design and construction of the existing parking lot, which is not proposed to change a whole lot, the design and construction of the existing commercial driveway, which is proposed to mostly remain in its current condition with the exception of a spur coming off the south side of it leading to the front door of the new proposed building, the screening of the existing dumpster, which is currently located within the fenced-in yard area of the existing site. So the decision of the Planning Commission would be whether or not that existing fence on site is sufficient to screen the dumpster, or whether some additional screening and landscaping might be required for the site's dumpster. The screening of the loading area, because this proposed building does face out onto Old US 23 and does have an old, proposed overhead door facing out onto Old US 23, it could be the determination of the Planning Commission that that overhead door area is in effect another new loading area, and the question becomes, is it sufficiently screened from the road in order to meet the standards of our loading area screening requirements? The existing site lighting, so I think there's three, maybe four parking lot lights on the site now, four, they are shoebox-style lights, but they are angled upward and outward, so they don't meet a strict application of zoning ordinance in terms of our exterior parking lot lightings need to be downward-directed, full cutoff-style lights, so that they only project the light downward onto the parking lot surface and not out onto the street or out onto adjacent sites. So the Planning Commission would need to make a determination of whether the existing lighting needs to be adjusted. In conversations with the applicant, and Mr. Poloski, correct me if I'm wrong, at least two new wall packs are proposed on the new building?
Two, three.
Three. And so hopefully we'll see that those wall packs are full cutoff, and the question becomes, should the wall packs on the existing building also be brought into compliance, so that we have full cutoff wall packs on the exterior of the existing building? That's a decision for the Planning Commission to make. And there's also some exposed HVAC equipment on the roof of the existing building, and Township's zoning ordinance does require that all rooftop equipment be screened from view, so another determination of the Planning Commission would be whether or not to require the existing screening, the existing equipment on the existing building to be screened from view as a condition of approval. There's been a lot of conversations over the years with the applicant, the business owner, on the signage on the site, both the existing monument sign and the existing wall signs, particularly the wall sign along the expressway side of the building. The applicant has made some attempts recently to bring that existing wall sign into compliance with the zoning ordinance. However, my understanding is neither of those signs received a sign permit, they were installed without a permit, and they don't meet a strict application of today's sign regulations, so the Planning Department recommends that as a condition of any site plan approval, that the applicant be required to work with the Planning Department on getting administrative approval of any and all site signage and bringing the existing signage into compliance with the zoning ordinance. And if that means having to redo some of the signage, that would be one of those conditions. Yeah, so we mentioned that there are some new wall packs proposed for the proposed building, that we didn't see the details of as part of the submittal, so another condition we're recommending is that we see those details, we being the Planning Department, do an administrative review and approval of any proposed new site lighting. And then there's also some relatively minor conditions noted in both the Township Engineers' Review Letter and the Fire Marshal's Review Letter that would need to be addressed on the stamping sets. Somehow I managed to skip over the existing landscaping. The Planning Commission would need to make a determination of whether the combination of the existing landscaping, the existing mature vegetation around the sites, and the proposed new landscaping satisfy the intent of the landscaping standards of our zoning ordinance, particularly as those standards apply to greenbelt plantings and parking lot perimeter landscaping plantings, and also foundation plantings around the proposed and the existing building. So if the Planning Commission feels that all those conditions can be addressed and resolved, then that would be our thought, that we would want to see those resolved as a condition of any site plan approval by the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
And I can go into more detail on any of those if and when you're ready to hear it.
Yep. Would you like to come up to the table here, introduce yourself, and do you have anything to add to that? Then we're going to go through Dave's letter, paragraph, or item by item.
My name's Stan Poloski, I am the project manager for Andy's Cultural Stone, AC Stone, Stone Pro, there's multiple businesses there. Andy just wants to build a storage building, it's 100% going to be a cold storage building, that would be nothing more. There will be electrical run to the building, as far as Dave was talking about wall packs, there are going to be a couple new wall packs out in front of the building, and one inside the fenced-in area. Other than that, it's going to be a wide-open storage building, just a wide-open trusses, no ceiling, no anything, no office, no nothing. So, that's what we're trying to do, the style we're doing. Actually, this has took a little bit longer of a process than Andy and I thought, and now he's already talking about adding on, if we get approval, he wants to do it again. His business is growing, does a lot of outside storage right now in the fenced-in area, his products come in cardboard pallets, he sells cultured stone. So he's trying to get it indoors, make everybody happy, so we're trying to come up with a happy ending, and hopefully this doesn't. That's really about all I have to say.
Okay.
We've covered everything.
All right.
By the way, he's doing his job.
All right, good deal.
He's been very, very helpful.
All right, well, why don't you have a seat there, because we're going to go through his letter dated June 26th, and then we'll probably ask some questions for your comments.
One more thing, the owner of the building is, the business Stone Pro, it's an LLC, it's his kids, but he's in agreeance, he wants to work with the Township. He will look on the signs, that I don't have anything for Dave, and he agrees, he'll do whatever he needs to do with the signs, get it going, so.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a look at the Planning Department's letter. I don't know if we have anything really to add on page one, because it's just a highlight of the items we're going to talk about, so let's look at page two. Overview of the proposed project, anybody got any questions on that? Probably not much in the approval process, this is a straight site plan, so the Planning Commission will be the final decision-maker on this particular application.
Yes.
So why don't we move to the top of page three, and the dimensional requirements, are there any questions on any of it? It would appear as though, according to this, we're meeting all the requirements with the proposal.
You are, it's a fairly good-sized site, and they're well within all the setback requirements for the zoning district and for that piece of property.
I do have, I have one question, you just mentioned that because of delay and the time, do you think you might want to expand the size of the building?
Well, that's what he's considering already, yeah. Plus, actually, he wants to consider, see the notch in the front of the building, the existing building? Right, there you go. He's considering squaring that up.
Add some office space there.
See, the office is in white, right in there? He's thinking about squaring that up, and I want to talk about that, if we can, if I'm allowed to.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Because the parking lot spaces, if he does that, I was reading through your letter, he currently has 21, he's allowed 28, and then I look up at the top, it says retail showroom, which we would add another 1,200 foot up there, that's what it's going to be, showroom, so I'd need another one and a half spaces. The reason why I'm covering this is because part of the proposal, the drainage from the proposed building has to go to the retention area out of Northwest Corne. So if we're going to saw, cut the concrete, well, if we're going to saw, cut the concrete and repair it, if we have to make the parking lot bigger for, let's call it Phase 2, we do it at that time.
So what about Phase 2 on the storage building, what are you thinking there?
He's thinking out loud that he'd like to take the same-sized building and go east with it.
So, double the size of it?
Yeah. We position that on the lot, he's got plenty of setback room, so.
So east on the lot, meaning it would just be that same building?
Right, right there, just add that, yep, correct.
It'd be just twice as long, same rectangular shape?
Yeah, and that's just, this is just thinking out loud, he wants to get through this first, but, you know, just know the direction he's heading. I mean, he's doing well, he's trying to expand.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was renting the building, and so he just bought the building, so.
Okay. Access, probably the first thing that we need to talk about here. Dave, what are we talking about?
The current standard of the zoning ordinance is that any commercial little driveway needs to be curb and gutter, which is not the situation there now, there is an asphalt driveway existing, and it would remain, and it would remain in its current state for the most part, other than the spur that I mentioned coming off the south side, heading to the new building. But also, as Stan mentioned, they're going to need to do some, a new culvert going under the existing driveway in order to provide adequate drainage for the proposed new building. Otherwise, the existing commercial driveway would remain in its current state. The Planning Commission does have the discretion to allow the commercial driveway to remain in its current condition without making them go back and reconstruct it as a curb driveway, but that would be part of the decision you have to make, is part of the overall site plan.
I drove over there this evening before I came, and it's an asphalt parking lot, and the drainage is all going, it looks like, it appears to be going the right way. I don't personally have an issue with having asphalt and no curb on this particular site.
And would this, if that's your feeling, would the same apply to the new portion? I mean, since they are putting in a new portion of commercial driveway, part of your decision would be, does that portion need to have curb and gutter, or could it be constructed in a manner consistent with what's already there?
I would construct it in a manner that's consistent with what's already there, personally. I think it would look odd to just have a, you know, curb and gutter driveway.
I've looked, Brian Downe here has looked at this, as far as getting a civil engineer involved and stuff like that, and he said the impact, because of the size of the lot, doesn't impact enough to get a civil engineer involved. Of course, your Township has here looked at it and approved it.
Now, the spur that's going off to the new building is slightly different in location to where that gravel driveway currently exists? Is that?
It's slightly different, correct, yeah, yeah.
So it'll be abandoned? Okay, so the old gravel driveway will be removed and?
Throw some topsoil and some grass seed on it, type of a thing?
Well, there's a landscape plan, all of it will be landscaped.
So we're all okay with access? Dumpster enclosure, Dave, what are we looking at here?
So, Mr. Poloski, correct me if I'm wrong, but the dumpster is usually situated right here, on the existing building?
Correct.
Right in that corner?
Inside.
So it's inside an existing six-foot privacy fence enclosure, that privacy fence enclosure was submitted to the Planning Department and approved within the last year, year and a half. I know that was part of the discussion that the applicant had with my predecessor of trying to resolve some of the outdoor storage and screening issues with their operation. So now there is an existing fence, and that would now be rolled into this site plan and then be approved as part of this overall site plan as well, or incorporated into it. Point being that the dumpster is behind an existing six-foot privacy fence, and the determination of the Planning Commission would be whether or not that is sufficient screening of the dumpster, or if additional screening of the dumpster is necessary. Furthermore, I can't remember, Mr. Poloski, we talked about this, but tell me whether or not there's any new dumpster proposed as part of this new building?
There's not.
Okay.
If it needed to be flipped, what they call it, if it needed to be dumped or flipped, well, you just get it dumped, you know, twice as easily as it wants to.
Okay, so.
There'd be our dumpsters.
Okay, so pretty big dumpster, the Planning Commission would just need to determine whether or not that is sufficient screening for the existing dumpster.
Are there other requirements on dumpsters besides just the screening, like a concrete pad versus asphalt? Because this site's all asphalt.
There are, if it were a new site plan, new dumpster, new enclosure, then you would need to have a concrete pad, and that concrete would have to extend beyond the dumpster to protect the, you know, usually the big trash trucks need a little heavy duty or surface beneath them, so that would be another requirement of a new dumpster pad. So, part of what the Planning Commission's decision would be whether or not to apply those standards in this case.
And landscaping around it, would that be on your landscaping plan?
Well, there'd be no landscaping around the dumpster on a plan because it's inside the fence, and we're not doing any landscaping inside the fence. It's, inside the fence is pretty much asphalt.
And it's a privacy fence, not?
Correct, it's a pretty solid privacy fence.
That's the existing six-foot fence?
Yeah.
I think I would be inside of a service yard with the wood screening fence, but I think it should be spelled out exactly where it sits, so that if we have an approved location here of one, we don't end up with four, or we don't end up with them outside the yard, if there's nothing specified.
That's fair.
Everybody else would tell us exactly where it's going to be.
Right.
So it's easy enough to identify the dumpster location.
Wants to move it somewhere else, and?
And it could end up outside the fence if it says, well, there's nothing specified. So, let's specify it.
To your knowledge, is there any particular reason why the dumpster sits in that particular location versus?
I just think it, to my knowledge, I just think it's out of the way. So, I know, well, he's pulling up, you know, right there, see, now the fence covers the dumpster, it's just out of the way right there. The trucks can get in there, even though there's a fence, the trucks can still use the same direct route in, back in, dump the dumpster.
The only reason I ask the question is, the dumpster is currently quite full, so you have product.
Over the six-foot fence?
That's visible, so I'm not opposed to stating that, in my opinion, the dumpster's fine behind the screening of the existing fence. I would feel much happier if the dumpster were farther to the east, on the other side of that day door, versus right next to the fence where, as the dumpster gets smaller.
I would have to ask.
So, other than that, I would be fine with it, I just noted that the dumpster is extremely full right now, and you have material sticking above it.
How tall are our enclosure walls on dumpsters, do you know?
Minimum of six feet.
Minimum six?
Yes. And the fence that's there is a six-foot privacy fence.
And then usually we have some landscaping around them, which it may or may not be tall.
Yes, it's up to the Planning Commission's discretion with the landscaping, it often depends on where on the site the dumpster is located, and whether it's already screened by the existing building, things like that. So there aren't specific landscaping standards per se, but oftentimes this Planning Commission does require landscaping around an enclosure.
If you end up making the changes you're referring to with the showroom in that front area you made mention of, do you think your plan would still be to leave the dumpster right there near the entrance area, just on topic?
I'm going to say yes, but I mean, that could be negotiable, you know, I could ask Andy, I don't want to tell, I don't want to speak for Andy, you know, I'd say, we'll just move the dumpster, because he's got it there for a reason. Maybe move it to the east, like Mike said, you know, that's a possibility, I can run it by Andy, but, I mean, you kind of sound, do you guys want a specific location for the dumpster? Which I understand totally, so I just, if I get with Andy, and maybe he comes up with a couple options.
You know, if that's going to be an entrance, you might not, you know, the owner may not want it there.
Then that's correct, but I don't know.
Wants his customers approaching next to.
Well, and there might be an easy fix of a couple changes to the landscape plan, throw a couple spruce trees in front of it.
Frequency of the dumping.
Right.
Or increased frequency of dumping, or whatever it might be. But I do think we should specify a location, because we could end up with one, two, or three, or they could be anywhere on the site if there's none.
I think that's good, and I also think that maybe there's some verbiage we could say about that, you know, that the trash cannot, you know, the intent of that screen is to hide, you know, the enclosure and trash, so I think maybe there's some verbiage we could write about that, that either more frequent pickups, or something else would be needed, that we should never be able to see anything above the fence. I don't know if there's something we could say about that.
I would agree, and maybe it would be an enforcing, zoning enforcement issue, but as someone who works in a manufacturing environment, I can tell you that sometimes the trash coming out is greater than the capacity of the dumpsters.
Sure.
And the pickup schedule, and you may call the trash hauler to come in, but they're going to come in a day after you call them, and by then it's already heaped up six feet, four feet, whatever it is, and it happens.
And a lot of the, I mean, I work on construction sites all the time, a lot of the trash haulers, they will not haul unless they're packed up, because they have the tarp up.
Right.
So they won't just heap their tarp up over the top of the pine, they won't do it, they'll leave.
Do you know how long that dumpster's been there?
Since he's been in business.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious, because we have like reinforced concrete that that thing sits on, because we have the big, we have several of those, and they tear the heck out of cement, I can't believe in asphalt, a piece of asphalt is even existing anymore.
I think it must be thick in there, because he runs high loads and stuff on it, so I'm sure it's more than four.
And I would think moving it would have to be his decision, because I know, you know, we don't know what that side of that building looks like in regards to access, how are they bringing the trash out of the building and that? You don't want him to have to haul it across the parking lot.
No, I understand that.
But, we could require that he provide better screening for it from the roof.
Could you, I mean, could, this is a, could we put a couple trees in front of there? Were they in this thing? I mean?
I mean, that would be one option, I, what I've heard from you is you may need to go back and talk to your client about some of these. So, I think the Planning Commission has given you some options of what could be done, and perhaps you talk over those options to your client and?
Dumpster would be classified, maybe movie, maybe planned trees.
Maybe a taller section of fence right there, perhaps.
Yeah.
Or maybe we just cut you out a bad day.
Yeah.
I mean, it could have been, just like, they're really busy.
While they're growing.
Sure.
You have to react to those things. So I would say we've made the intent clear, we don't want to see it over the fence, or the screen.
And if you do go for the option of the trees, could be something like they were saying, evergreen, because of six months of our year, there's no leaves.
There is, I made sense.
You know, so just look at that.
Okay, next up would be on page four, the off-street parking.
The existing site does meet minimum parking standards in terms of the quantity of parking spaces, the standard parking spaces and the barrier-free spaces required by the ADA. The parking lot, as we've mentioned, is not curbed, there are some bumper blocks along the east and south perimeter of the existing parking lot, in order, which helps keep the cars from parking on the landscaped areas. The, one of the determinations that the Planning Department is seeking from the Planning Commission, is whether or not the existing parking lot, its design and construction could remain in its current state, or whether some upgrades would need to be required, whether it's going so far as requiring curb and gutter, as would be required on a new parking lot. The Planning Department offers that perhaps, given the state of the existing parking lot, a resealing and a restriping of the? state of the existing parking lot, a resealing and a restriping of the existing parking lot might be one of the conditions the planning commission could apply in order to bring the site more into reasonable compliance with current standards. But again, this is another one where the, the planning commission does have some discretion with what needs to be required for the existing parking lot as a condition of site plan approval.
Dave, do we usually see on our plans this parking breakdown? Is this something that they should just put on the plans?
Oftentimes it is provided by the applicant. In this case, it involved a conversation between myself and the applicant and a breakdown of square footage of the warehouse area versus the showroom area versus the office area and some calculations on staff's part.
One, just wondering, if we've got to make some changes to the plan with the dumpster so far and notations on however we're going to take care of that, whether he could just lift your chart?
I have no trademark on the chart that I created. He can lift it.
We're always going to modify the plan anyways, so far anyways.
So long as the applicant agrees with my calculations and with my square footage breakdown.
He just wants this on the print.
If he doesn't agree with it, then he needs to speak now.
Sure.
We're approving it based upon this or reviewing it based upon this. That's all. That page is going to be reprinted anyway.
Yes.
So if you agree with that.
I agree with it. So you want this on the...
It's typically on the print. So are you inclined to think the parking lot's acceptable at this time?
I do.
Do you want to see it restripped?
I don't, yeah. I don't see a need.
Okay.
It was five for me.
Okay. So no seal coating and striping. Is that pretty much it there, Dave, on that one?
Yes. And we've already talked about if and when they come back in the near future with a, another expansion. As you can see, they're pretty much at, at the minimum right now. So future expansions may very well require expansion of the existing parking lot. And I think the applicant's already well aware of that.
Yeah. Okay. So let's move on to page five and loading area.
So loading areas are required per the zoning ordinance. In this particular case, this particular use, two loading spaces are required. The loading spaces are to be 10 feet by 50 feet. The, this whole fenced-in enclosure is, I would think, in effect, the loading area for the site. And in addition, this new driveway to the north side of the proposed building and this driveway to the west side of the proposed building, I would have to think would, would serve as a loading area as product is, comes and goes from that proposed new building. So square footage wise, the site does appear to more than adequately provide a loading area despite the fact that it's not specifically noted on the plan that this shall be the 10 by 50-foot loading area. The question that remains is particularly in this spot, we do have requirements that loading areas be screened from view. And if we determine that this is effectively a loading area in front of this overhead, proposed overhead door, then one of the things the planning commission would need to discuss is, is there anything that could, should be done to better screen that loading area? Because we do require that loading areas be screened from public view. Keeping in mind that this is a site with two fronts, so Old 23 on the west, the expressway on the east, it would conceivably be difficult to locate a loading area anywhere on this site that would, wouldn't be, that would be 100% screened from public view. As we discussed elsewhere in the letter, there is a very healthy amount of mature vegetation along Old US-23 that the planning commission could determine serves in screening that loading area. But we wanted the planning commission to have that discussion.
I think Sue's points a good one in regards to, you know, what is the vegetation along Old 23 in the off-season? If it's clear, if the leaves just fall, should there be some evergreen, you know, because that's always there? That would be an option.
It seems to me, like you're saying, you know, kind of where you've got your deciduous trees, the west side of your new spur here, those could be exchanged instead for an evergreen tree screen. And that might solve the problem. Because then when we're going up and down 23, I think is where we would see, even in the opening right now, which I know is really fast, you drive by quick, little view in.
You can't.
You can't. And, yeah. Probably not even the winter. But since you're already investing in some landscape, maybe it would be better suited as, as an evergreen tree screen, if you guys agree on that idea.
I like that.
Yeah, I think given the position, those are existing trees, right? That we're seeing?
No.
Well, this is proposed.
Those are proposed.
Where the proposed building is saplings, okay?
Yeah.
We're all going to come out of them.
Sure.
By color, I can't see it, but I did know by, maybe the circle was right on the line of the, so that's probably, it's already part of your plan by the looks of things.
Mm-hmm.
Some sort of, it's already part of your plan and by the looks of things, yeah.
So is what I'm hearing that...
New drive pine trees.
I mean, you're showing, I think they're elms. You're suggesting, Sue, Ms. Grissom, that these get replaced with an evergreen to give kind of a year-round screening.
And I don't have the spacing, but you're going to have to do some more evergreen trees than the number that you have of the elm trees, just because you've got them quite a distance apart.
I'm looking at the big circles up there. Three, are you talking like five?
Five to seven, somewhere in there. Just kind of, you know, a grouping, however you want. But just, you know, no gaps between. Typically when we space like evergreen trees, you go about 15 feet apart, if that helps you. So when you kind of scale it. Because you, you know, you plant them, then they're going to grow. So it's trying to find a reasonable distance.
Sue, were you also thinking that where the, it looks like there's a tree proposed on the north side of that spur, an evergreen also, instead of maybe an elm right there?
I don't, you know, again, it sounds like we need to screen from public view. I don't know what's on the north side that's needed or not, you guys.
Yeah, I think the intent is from the main roads. So anything interior of that, I think, can be planned.
Yeah.
Just would like to talk about the loading area and all that. Because I know how the ordinance is written in it. And the, the ordinance says it needs to be labeled on the print, needs to be whatever it is, 20 by 50, 10 by 50?
10 by 50.
10 by 50.
10 by 50.
Two, 10 by 50 spaces. And you can't store, you cannot use the area or the area to get to the loading area for storage. And I just wonder if we should designate where it is. You might not use it that way, but we should designate loading areas because this could end up being a big outdoor warehouse. I understand it's in cardboard boxes, but we also could get the situation that we have right now, today, this evening, the semis are parked on the lawn. They're on the grass. So I wonder if, since it says it needs to be dedicated to that, we should, we should call it out on the print where the two spaces are.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Gives us an enforcement mechanism when it becomes an issue. So I agree.
Any other questions, comments on loading?
Open on screening, if I can go back?
Sure.
If we were done with that?
Yep.
Now, there's a, there's another entrance to this added building. Correct, it's on the western end, unless it's not an entrance. It's just asphalt that approaches it over there?
Yeah.
Is there a door there?
There is.
There's a, within the yard. That's within the fenced-in yard.
Within the yard area. So now, I didn't see the fence. So is screening, back to the point that there is frontage on, from the freeway side of it, is there screening necessary for that door seen in that direction? Or does that seem like an issue to anyone?
It's inside the fence.
It's...
See the building? See the building where there's stone on the bottom perimeter of it? And then it stops right there and it's all steel? Because that's inside the fence.
So the fence would tie in, correct me if I'm wrong here, the fence would tie in right to this corner of the building.
Correct.
And I think the argument on the applicant is that that particular loading area is within the fenced-in area and that fenced-in area provides the screening from public view.
Okay. So the fence is tall enough? It's a six-foot fence?
It will connect to the new proposed building.
Yeah, I think the fence will provide the screening from the freeway.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the loading area or screening or anything relating to the loading area? Okay, let's move on to the...
So two loading areas are going to be, one in the front and one inside the yard?
It's, it's up to you to some degree, but you need to show where the loading areas, you and your client, need to show where the loading areas are on the site. And then it needs to be agreed upon that those loading areas will always need to be, remain clear.
Clear by 100?
10 by 50.
10 by 50.
They can't, you can't show a loading area and then when we go out there a year from now, have it be a storage area. And then we have trucks parked in the, in the grass because the loading area was blocked.
Anything else on that topic? Let's move to the next one, landscaping. Dave, what have we got here? This is a bigger one.
It is. And like most landscaping plans, we can get into a great deal of detail or we can talk more about what is proposed and what is the intent and decide whether there could be some enhancements perhaps made. The, the proposed landscaping has already been discussed to some degree and we've, the planning commission has suggested some changes. It's a combination of some, excuse me, some deciduous trees, some shrubs, some perennials, and that's essentially it. There is a quantity on the, on the plan and I tried to summarize it in my letter. Bear with me. Okay, 11 new deciduous trees, 34 new shrubs, and 200 new, new perennials. So with any new commercial site plan, the planning, the zoning ordinance requires landscaping in a number of areas, particularly greenbelt plantings along any public road. So in this case, Old US-23 and the US-23 expressway. We also require perimeter parking lot plantings to screen any surface parking areas. So typically you would see that along the exterior perimeter of the parking lot. We have requirements for interior parking lots, landscape islands based on the number of parking spaces. We try to break up the, the parking area with, the asphalt with some landscape islands. We require foundation plantings along the base of any new building. And then in addition to everything else, we have a 25% increase that, in addition to all the landscaping that we require, you have to provide another 25% on top of that. So I mentioned the quantities that the applicant is proposing. And you can see that they're primarily clustered along the west side of the proposed building. Some new plantings proposed along the entrance to the, the main entrance to the existing building. Some new trees and shrubs within the parking lot perimeter area. And my understanding, and Mr. Plasky can correct me if I'm wrong, is that most of the existing mature vegetation around the perimeter is to remain.
Correct.
And if, if you'll allow me, I mean, if we, just to give you a sense of what that existing vegetation looks like, it is fairly substantial along the old US-23 side, along the north perimeter, to a lesser degree perhaps, along the expressway side. And then these plantings here, I believe, were planted, was done by the storage facility next door. So what the applicant is essentially requesting is a, something of a, planning commission's discretionary decision on whether the existing vegetation and the proposed new landscaping is sufficient to meet the intent of the current standards of the township's zoning ordinance as it pertains to landscaping.
Where, the requirement is for them to meet the current specification because of the addition or...
Well, we talked about early on, in cases like this where you have an existing commercial site where an applicant is proposing an improvement, the, one of the roles of the planning commission is to find that balance of bringing the site into reasonable compliance, to get the improvement on the site that we all want to see happen without necessarily making those improvements sober, some that they become cost prohibitive and then no one who owns an existing non-compliance site has any incentive to ever make an improvement because it's simply not worth it. So then that pertains to parking lot improvements and building improvements and building materials and also landscaping. So part of your role tonight is to find where that reasonable balance is in proportion to what the applicant is proposing. The, the planning department did have some suggestions on if the planning commission so chooses some areas where some additional plantings may be, may be warranted in order to better, better meet the intent of Section 511 of the zoning ordinance.
From my perspective, along Old US-23, I think the current vegetation certainly provides a greenbelt appearance. The, the concern along the south side, because as you see the property today, and it does have some of the young saplings growing and stuff like that, it's hard to perceive what that parcel's going to look like when that's cleaned out and the building is in existence. Although I do recognize that to the south of this parcel is a storage facility. So, so all in all, I guess what I was trying to lead to is I felt comfortable with the perimeter foliage that currently exists on the site. My only question might be along the expressway side of the, of the site, which I didn't have an opportunity to look at. I don't know if there's any open holes there that if a new building were built, you know, becomes extremely obvious or if there's something that might need to be put in there to do some screening. But all in all, I guess, from my opinion, I thought the existing vegetation and foliage that was in existence was fairly well screened for the most part.
Well, I, I agree as well. I tried to look at it from the freeway both ways, heading north and southbound. And it's just like, boom, you know, you barely get a little glimmer. And there's, you know, right now, everything in full leaf. And it was like, well, that's fine. It seemed wasteful to add more. I don't know what happens in the winter, but just that whole edge, I mean, it just has such a nice character with the large trees. Off of 23, I mean, that's a beautiful greenbelt right now. I don't think we're in a fuss with any of that. Interior, if anything, I believe you need some more foundation plantings, which you're showing on your plan. You know, right now it's a little bare. But I mean, just the natural setup of the whole place. I don't feel we need any more screening for the parking lot. It's just kind of some of that softening for foundation, which you are showing. So I mean, whether we can soften, let's say, your screen fence that acts as your screen for your dumpster. And if we get those trees in there, that will also help soften the foundation. This is an extension of the building. But I just didn't feel that we needed to add any more that I could...
Dave, I don't mean to cut you off. Will you zoom in on that picture right there?
I think that's as far as I can go.
The reason why is I'm looking at a dumpster pad right there. Is that a concrete pad for the dumpster?
It sure looks like one, doesn't it?
So that's why the dumpster's there.
Yeah.
Well, plus there may be a door.
I will still talk to Andy. I don't mean to distract. I'll still talk to Andy about that, but that's probably why we don't...
I would add the comment on the, the screening. They're on the freeway because they'd also like to be seen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they'd be in the back 40 somewhere if the zoning would permit it. So I would not like to see any, or would not think we need to require any more screening on the freeway side. And I agree with the comments of both other parties here.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's fine as proposed. Aside from the loading area that we talked about already.
Yeah.
And the dumpster screening.
Okay. So we're on to page six and we're on sidewalks and pathways. No changes proposed.
The planning commission could have the discretion to require a frontage sidewalk or a sidewalk into the site. As you can see from this area, no sidewalks exist on either side of the road, on either side of the property. And I don't know that any exists within any reasonable distance of this site. I suppose an argument could be made that we've got to start somewhere with a sidewalk network. The planning commission would need to decide whether this particular site in this particular location is where that sidewalk network starts.
My position is that's not the location where we should start a sidewalk. My position is that's not the location where we should start a sidewalk.
Everybody agree with that one?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to lighting. Dave?
The, so I'm just, bear with me here. So the existing, the proposed site plan did not speak to any new site lighting. In conversations with the applicant, Mr. Plasky, subsequent to submittal, what I'm hearing is, and again, I'm, Mr. Plasky, correct me, but two new wall packs on the, on this side of the existing, of the proposed building.
Correct.
And then one more on this side somewhere?
Yeah, near the door. We have two side codes, even though it's a cold storage building, you gotta be able to turn light switch on, you gotta be able to turn outside light on when you enter a building.
Okay. So one wall pack over this door and two over this door?
Two next to that door.
On either side of this door or one over?
One over there. Maybe, there might be two over there too.
Okay.
Two existing wall packs on that south side right there.
Those are the only ones?
Will change down to man.
So six new wall packs total.
Wall packs.
Three, three on this building, three on this building? No, four on?
Four and two.
Four and two.
You know where I'm going.
And then the parking lot lights, like you said, they're, they're tipped down.
Okay.
So we just, you can tip them down.
They are of a design that you could tip them down. So what I'm hearing from the applicant is they're willing to install new wall packs on the proposed building that are fully compliant, full cutoff, replace the two existing, on the existing building with ones to match the compliant ones on the new building. And they're going to adjust the existing parking lot pole lighting, adjust the angle of the existing fixtures so that they're downward facing. In lieu of a photometric plan and some of the more detailed information that we typically require on a new site plan, the planning commission could make a determination that those, those changes could bring the site into reasonable, reasonable compliance and with respect to exterior lighting requirements.
Well, given the exchange that just happened about 90 seconds ago in regards to two, three, four, and six lights and where they are, and nobody knows, we typically...
I don't know. Mr. Plasky knows.
Well, but...
I just couldn't...
But that means nobody knows and nobody could ever check whether it was done right. I think we typically would require them to be on the print.
Yes.
Along with the model, along with the model of the light fixture, the location on the building, all of that. Otherwise we could have more or less than what we just talked about, which I'm not sure what that was.
Do for us.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions on lighting then? You okay without a photometric plan?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Water supply and waste disposal? Nothing there, Dave?
They're on well and septic now, they'll be on well and septic if and when this gets built.
Okay.
So no new REUs need to be purchased, no infrastructure impacts.
Okay. Bottom of page six, architecture and building materials. Dave?
So again, discretionary decision by the planning commission and I will pull up the elevations of the proposed building. As I mentioned earlier today, that this site is in within facade group one of the township's zoning ordinance, which is the most, looking for the highest quality materials in terms of facade materials and building materials and architecture. Things like 30% minimum of brick, 20% maximum of standing seam metal. There's also maximum of other materials that aren't, aren't proposed here. What the applicant has is a overage of the standing seam metal siding in addition to an overage as it pertains to the visible portions of the pitch roof and an underage of brick or stone. Now, that being said, the applicant is proposing the four-foot cultured stone base along all of the sides of the building, other than the portion that's within the storage yard area with a limestone cap. And my understanding is they will also apply this same look to the nor, excuse me, west side of the existing building. So there would be an improvement to the existing building, bringing that into closer compliance with the current standards of the zoning ordinance. And then I know I've spoken to Mr. Plasky and he had to get back with his client a little bit, but my understanding is the, the existing building will be painted to match the metal siding color of the new building?
Correct. The existing building is gray, black, and it has standing seam. This standing seam metal will be the same color. The block in the existing building will be repainted. There's a red stripe on the building. He wants to get rid of the red stripe. So, so he's going to paint the, that building, but the metal stays the same and then the block gets painted. The perimeter block, the red stripe goes away and then to the bottom of the windows, if you can zoom over near the blue car.
Uh...
Underneath the window there. Yeah, that gets stoned. The whole south, that little south wall, but the whole west face of the building gets cultured stone to match the proposed building. And that's on the drawing. And then a little piece of south wall right there to return.
Does the, does the color of the...
Stays the same.
Okay. And is that going to match or be close to?
The building is going to match that.
Okay.
And then the roof will be the same steel, but it'll be darker gray. So it'll be two tone.
Is the roof metal on the existing building the darker?
It's flat. You can't, it's flat.
Okay. So the applicant has, and hopefully you all found it in front of you this evening, the applicant has submitted a letter dated July 10th formally requesting a waiver of an applicant, strict application of the facade material requirements of section 5.24. The planning commission does have the discretion to grant that waiver if the planning commission determines that what is proposed for both the proposed building and the existing building satisfies the intent of the building material standards of section 5.24.
So if that block wall's going to be painted?
Yeah.
What color will that, did you already mention what color?
It's going to be gray. It'll be gray. It'll be, it'll be the same color as, it's a little bit darker, but two-thirds of that will have stone on it. Don't forget, this will have stone on it too. So part of it'll be painted, part of it is new stone and then red stripe goes away.
And then that gray matches the...
Yeah, stones and...
Yes, that, that's the cultured stone at the base of both buildings.
Correct. With a limestone cap.
But I'm not sure if that answered your question about the, the shade of gray that they're going to do the painting?
Well, I'm, I'm confused by the letter because I'm, I'm not sure, it states that the red stripe is going to be painted gray on the existing building to match the new steel siding on the proposed building.
Which will also match the old building.
Okay.
The new steel, the new steel on the new proposed building matches in color the old steel on the old building. That right there. So the new building's steel, sidewall steel will be gray to match that.
Okay.
Stone replaced on both proposed and the new building. And then that red stripe goes away. That gets painted to match the gray.
Typically, so that gray color that we're seeing?
Yes.
Will continue down, covering the red stripe on the wall?
Down to the stone.
And all, all the way down to the ground level or to the new stone level?
Well, in this case, it'll be at the new top of the new stone.
And that stone level will be?
The bottom of the window. It's about four foot high.
Okay. And that new stone is going to go all the way across this block wall here?
Now, mind you, I had mentioned to the board already that he's proposing addition there. He realizes that. He's still going to do this now, stone it. And then, you know, if we do that, do approval, it'll pare it off and redo it again.
Okay.
He's in the stone business, so that doesn't affect him that bad.
Yeah, he knows where he's getting his stone.
Correct, right.
Can see that.
So I just didn't want you to think that it sounded like a big waste of money or he's falling spoilt at these times.
Typically, we would see on the print though, all of the specific materials called out. I mean, we don't know...
It's on the print.
Okay. With the colors, you know, Sherwin-Williams, Benjamin Moore.
I guess it doesn't say the name.
Yeah. It usually, well...
Really?
You, yeah, well typically it is. Typically the prints are pretty complete. They call out the specific brand and model of stone. They call out the paint color. The roof color's different now. I don't know what color it is, you know? So typically we get into the...
You want, you want specific color?
Yeah.
Does your print only indicate though, the new structure? The print only indicates the new structure?
It, it indicates stone on the old structure too.
Oh, oh does it? Maybe I just won't see that in that.
I care. It's got a stone.
Right. Provide and install cultured veneer stone and similar to detail 6A dot 201 on exterior of proposed building. So then we could probably cross-reference that.
Yeah.
I have a question about the location. Okay, so again, you've kind of dashed in that it's on the west side of that building and you're going to add that cultured stone.
Come down west, petties.
Right.
Sorry, come south, petties.
Sure.
Everywhere, I'm sorry, everywhere you're showing that dash line.
Dash line is basically graphically just trying to say, here's where we're in, the cultured stone.
Correct.
The new building is going to be clad everywhere except where we have it hidden by the screen fencing or the screened-in area. Hence, the east side of the new building will have the stone.
The east side, the south side?
Sure.
And the west side.
So I'm, I'm wondering about your existing building, if the east side also should have the stone. So when we're looking at it from the freeway, the existing building and your new building kind of read together. Just because it is visible view, I mean, quickly off the freeway, but we're talking about leaving, you know, a view to see that building from 23. Does it make sense that the existing building and your new tie together and have that stone base? Question.
Does the red stripe come around the back of the, on the freeway side too?
I don't think about that. I think that's black from there. Split piece, black.
Uh, it is.
Yeah, I, I saw the red stripe today.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if that should match. You know, because we've got the new building with that kind of that look, it just seems that you'd want to tie the two together.
Would you think only on the east side, on the freeway side, or, or bring it around the corner to the, what would this be, the north side?
I, I, you know, again, it's so hard to see, you know, even here we are in the summer. You know, it's so quickly, but I did see, you know, the sign, the red stripe. I saw the building and I'm just thinking if the intent is on your new building, you're going to do the base, it seems like in for visibility, you'd want them to be together, at least the east sides, just to comment.
I don't know how much you're going to be able to see that.
Yeah, it's hard to kind of see the base.
And where the new, the proposed building is going to be located.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you'll be able to make that connection.
I don't even know if you'll be able to see it at all, even on the new building. I agree. I don't know, it just seems odd that one is one way?
Yeah.
And one the other. I could definitely see the stripe and I could definitely see your sign today, but I don't know if I could see below the stripe.
Yeah.
So it's just a comment, it just seems a little odd that we're doing one and not the other.
Stripe will all be taken.
Sure, sure.
That's probably something we can revisit if they extend the building, you know, to the property line or setback, because then it'll be really close to where the existing building's at.
Sure.
And or revisit it when they add the new showroom.
Or add the new showroom.
And we'll see what we can even see of the one that they build now, because I don't know that we'll even see it.
That's, that's where we should go with that one.
Okay.
If they, if they add the new showroom addition, we can reevaluate.
Yep.
Additional on that building.
Okay.
Okay.
So you'll get the print, you got to change the print anyway with all these notes we're doing. You'll get the, you got to know what the sheet metal colors are and you got to know, you've got to know all that stuff. Just put it on the print.
So, but generally while we're on architecture and building materials, we don't have a problem with, with, I mean, with the proposed building not meeting architectural standard of the area. Because like as Stan already said, they plan to expand already and it's not going to be just a, a small addition, it's going to be a very large addition to the site, I think, eventually. And I understand it's a cost, a big cost to bring it into compliance with our architectural standard, but I think it's something that we need to consider at this point. So, I mean, I, I've got a little bit of a problem. You know, I understand an existing non-conformity and if you wanted to add an office space, keeping the existing building, you know, to the existing architecture. But when we're adding new space to the site, we're adding new buildings to the site and quite significant now too, almost doubling the size of the current facility if we take into account, you know, the addition that you mentioned here tonight. That's a lot, in my opinion. And then when the client goes away next year because they're, they want to double again and they can't because they don't have the site space for it, we're left with the building that was just recently, you know, upgraded, but not to the current standard.
When they go away?
Well, let's say, let's say that they're, let's say business, it keeps going on the trajectory, trajectory that it is right now.
Okay.
And they overgrow the site and they need to move. And they own, they want to sell the building and now we're stuck with a brand-new building nearly that doesn't meet our architectural standard. So, or the landscape, or a lot, a lot of the other site standards that are non-conforming. So I think we need to take a hard look at that and really think about it. That's my general comment on their architectural standards.
You mean for the next phase or for this phase?
Well, for, for the next phase, for this phase, for five, 10 years down the road, for the other, you know, tenants up and down that stretch that have existing non-conformities and, and that sort of thing. So, because that's an awful big building that you're proposing right now. And it's really just a pole barn. And I even see on the, on the site plan that the flooring of the, of the, the building is whatever the client wants, so, or by the client. So when they construct this building, it's not even going to have a floor in it. Is that the way I understand?
No, this is good. It's got to have concrete in it.
It's going to have concrete.
Yeah, it's going to have, yeah, it's going to have concrete.
Okay.
It has to because you can't get a highway in and out of it, sort of box.
Yeah, but I thought it said by client or something on that, on the flooring.
I don't think so.
Maybe I misread that, but...
No, it's going to have concrete.
Regardless, it's a pole barn. And it's going to be double the size here for what we're wearing tonight. So it's going to be a very large pole barn constructed in our, you know, our architectural standard, the highest architectural standard area that we have in the township. That's my concern.
Well, we should discuss that.
Right. Right. Because if it's a brand-new building, I mean, should we start and do it correct? You know?
At least a couple of sides of it.
It's the new building, not, not...
Stay exposed side, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand the sites that are in the fenced-in area, the work area that don't have exposure to the highway, you don't have exposure to old 23. But maybe we should think about the other sites.
Would the west side of the building, the side facing out to old, old 23, would that be, if there were to be additional improvements, would that be the most likely candidate?
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
Just that west elevation and the east elevation. Or maybe not the east elevation if we understand that the addition's going to be coming.
Well, like I said, he's just thinking out loud. I mean, you know, that's something he'd want to do. We positioned the building on, on a lot, you know, we've got plenty of setbacks, we've got plenty of room to expand.
Right. But that, the north elevation, I wouldn't have a problem. Everybody sees that anyway. It's inside the lot. South elevation's plenty screened or could be plenty screened from the, you know, from the neighboring use and really, does it make a difference there? Probably not. But, you know, the high visibility...
So what are you proposing to add to the west and east elevation?
I'm not proposing anything. I'm just saying I have a problem with the way you're proposing it.
Okay.
But I think that would be an easy fix. I think those two gabled elevations there.
You have a suggestion?
Whatever meets the architectural standard.
So you would propose meeting architectural standards on the west and possibly the east elevation?
Right.
So part of that could be, I mean, so right now they're, they're over on the standing seam metal, they're under on the brick or the stone. So an, an increase in one of those materials, the brick or the stone, and a decrease in the standing seam metal.
Yeah. I think that would be an easy fix.
I'm just looking at it for looking at it. You're, you're saying it'd be an easy fix, but I mean, I think it looks, and this is just my personal opinion, it looks proper with a stone belt. If you're thinking go up to meet the township requirements with stone, you're saying you have stone eight, 10 foot high, whatever the number is, and the rest, standing seam, eight, 10-foot high, whatever the number is, and the rest standing seam, I just think that'll look out of place. And that's just my opinion, but I mean, you understand sometimes...
I think a pole barn looks out of place there, if you want my general opinion. I think a pole barn looks out of place there. I mean, we've got some very high architectural standards for that area, and they don't include pole barns. So, I mean, I think the whole thing looks out of place. So, anything to do with that elevation, I think, would be an improvement.
And I think, when you read the stone and brick content, that's a minimum.
We read it.
That's a minimum.
I understand.
Yeah. We have a lot of buildings that don't have any standing seam metal, so there could be that opportunity. Well, there're gonna be opportunities for them to go back and revise this print off the conversations tonight, so they can take that note with them.
Yeah.
And, and continue to work with that.
And I'd be more, more than willing to overlook that east elevation, just because it does front the highway, number one, and if it's going to be expanded in short term, I would respect that, and, you know, we definitely wanna see people expand in the township.
Yeah, I don't know what this'll do to them, I don't. I mean, I, I know Andy's willing to work with it, don't take it the wrong way, but I don't know what the compromise would be on the west elevation to make it look proper.
Right. I'm sure there's something.
I mean, we, I, Andy's in the stone business. It'd be interesting for me to say, "Andy, put stone up to the top of the door," but would that look correct? But that would be decent.
Again, that's a minimum.
As long as I get the percentage up on the west elevation, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, exactly, right, just to meet the standard, I think.
Just, so the applicant's clear, is, is there any, would we not wanna see a trade-off, though? I mean, we, we don't necessarily wanna see less stone on another portion of the building so that we get more on the west, right? I mean, right?
No, because, yeah, no, because the ordinance is per side.
Yes.
The ordinance is per side. So what Jeff is saying, and I've seen a few heads nod yes, is the west elevation needs to meet the standard. My added comment to that is that if the standard gets you to the top of the garage door, the standard is a minimum, and you might wanna think that through a little bit and exceed it.
I'm, I agree. The standard includes 30% minimum of brick, 20% of standing seam metal.
Well, again, you don't have to have any standing, you don't have to have any standing seam metal. It could have it all stone.
Correct, but I have to have a minimum of 30.
Minimum.
That would be right.
Okay.
And it's gotta look right.
This is, this is a showcase for, this is an opportunity, in my opinion, because this building is gonna be probably more visible than the existing building. And so when people are just turning their head because they see a stone pro sign, and they look and they see a pole barn, they might wanna see a pole barn with a very nice facade on it, and maybe all the different, nah, maybe not all of it.
I don't know.
Maybe some very, very nicely designed, you know, brick or stonework on the front face of that building to show what it can look like.
So your product shows as soon as you drive into the, to the property actually become the sign from back there.
I think he's missing an opportunity.
Yeah. I'm just gonna jump forward to the future, too, 'cause if he expands, let's say, the office part that he talked about, you know, and flip-flops it, that whole, you know how you see a lot of the buildings with the offices different than the backdrop building?
Mm-hmm.
Then that, too, can be done, that will reflect what you're doing on this side.
Exactly.
And we'll all tie together, 'cause we'll probably want that to be part of the code.
Right.
So when he's thinking of it, just kinda think of both of those, and I think it will work well.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
But keep in mind, you don't have to have any standing seam metal on one side if you choose not to.
I'm, I'm hearing you.
Okay. And that it has to look...
I'm understanding.
It has to look right. Any other comments on the architecture component for that? Dave, anything to add?
I do not have anything to add.
Okay. Roof mounted equipment for the bottom of page seven.
So the proposed building, my understanding, is not going to have any roof mounted equipment. In viewing the existing building, there's some HVAC units on top of what I understand to be the office, uh, sales area of the existing building, and the zoning orders does require that rooftop mechanical be screened from view at ground level, and this picture being taken at ground level, and, and there is, there is some of the mechanical equipment visible. So, a condition of approval at the discretion of the planning commission is whether or not that existing equipment should be better screened.
I don't have any problem with the way it is.
Personally, when I was out there, I didn't see it.
Well, then I would add that if they do the addition on to the showroom, we could discuss that at that point.
Absolutely. I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
So we'll leave it alone at this time. Signs.
So the existing site has, by my count, two wall signs and one monument sign. There's a very small one on the, near the entrance to the existing building, and I'm kinda moving my cursor around here. There is the, the larger sign on the expressway side that it's worth noting the applicant has recently revised to take the stone border away. What's still to be determined is whether the existing portion is, is still compliant with, with our sign regulation standards. And then there is a monument sign along Old US 23 in this area that, by all accounts, may be too close to the old US 23 right away. So the applicant has offered to bring all those sites into compliance with the current standards of the sign regulations of the zoning ordinance, and the, because signs fall under administrative approval of the planning department, the recommendation of that department is for a condition of approval of the site plan, be that all signage be brought into compliance with current, current standards, that the planning department review and issue a new sign permit for some amendments to the existing signage to bring it into compliance.
I would support all of that. I would like to say, since there's an opportunity here, that they're gonna be revising the plans, that the condition could, could include, we could ultimately, at our next meeting, whenever we do, do the site plan, should we approve it, but I'd like to see the signs permit, the designs administratively approved before a land use permit is issued. And the reason I say the signs may not have to be constructed, but they have to be designed and approved before the land use permit. It's just an easier sequence of events to take place that way.
I'm fine with that. It sounds good.
So, and since he's willing to do it, just, he can be working on that while you're working on adjusting the plans, and that way, everything's in place and book, and Dave will have his signs approved before he issues a land use permit. Any other questions on signs? All right, back on, or we're up to page eight, stormwater management.
The applicant is proposing to provide some stormwater, basically some additions to the existing sites, some drain lines and such along the perimeter of the proposed building, to capture the, the stormwater shedding off the roof of the proposed building, direct it to a basin here, to a culvert under the existing driveway, and ultimately to the detention ponds that already exist on the northwest corner of the site. The township engineer has looked at that plan and finds that it's reasonable, and that's how they are addressing the new stormwater that's gonna be produced as part of, of this plant. And since the township engineer has, has found it to be satisfactory, we at the planning department determine that it meets the required, the township's requirements in terms of stormwater management.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. DPW review?
DPW really didn't have much to say because there's no water sewer now, nor will there be as part of this addition.
All right, engineers review?
Both engineer and, and the fire, skipping ahead, had some relatively minor conditions of approval that I have no reason to think can't be easily addressed on a stamping set.
Okay. I think we're there. Any other further questions or comments? I would suggest that, given the number of comments we have tonight, that we send them back to modify the plans and resubmit to Dave and the planning department.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
All good?
Yeah, it's about that timing, though. How, I mean, I'll get the prints done, I don't have a big deal, but I'm just looking at timing.
Sure.
That's his thing, that's what he wants.
Sure. Uh, we could talk more about it in general. Planning Commission meets first and, no, second, excuse me, second and fourth Thursday of each month. And my agenda packet has to be to, submitted to this group a week prior. So, if we looked at some dates, we'd have to back it out a week in order to get the packets out to the planning commission, and then we'd have to back it out at least another week for myself to do a, and I hope you trust that I can, I'll do as mu- as much as I can with it to, to keep things expedited. But we do have to do a review, we do have to check that, that all the things that you're hearing tonight have been addressed on the plans. I have to put that in writing. So, I'd like to think we could, we could get on an August meeting, if we can do the first August meeting, we'll do what we can.
Anyone else? Any questions? Well, thanks for coming in.
No, no, thank you.
Make sure, thank you for taking the opportunity to, we're glad he's growing.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Look forward to seeing you back here soon. We have no public, so we'll move on to item 10, planner report.
The Parks and Recreation Plan, the Township Board approved a contract for our old friends at McKenna Associates to help us with the, the new five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. So, we're gonna be having a kickoff meeting with them here soon, and kinda getting our ducks in a row, as they say, with the intent of starting to hold some public input sessions in the fall, once the kids are back in school and, you know, everybody's back from their vacations, whatnot. We're gonna be seeking some representation on a Parks and Recreation Plan Task Force, and some of you may be encouraged to, to be a part of that. More to come on that. We continue to work, we as a staff and with the Ordinance Review Committee on the zoning ordinance amendments, and particularly those amendments pertaining to our sign regulations. A quick reminder, we're talking about portable temporary signs in our village district, home occupation signs, donor recognition signs, and commercial agricultural signs. Three of the four are in very good shape, and we hope the ORC will agree when we meet with them, hopefully on the 24th of this month. And we've still got some work to do on the agricultural signage. That one can get a little more complicated when you take into account the Right to Farm Act and, and what we are and are not allowed to regulate as a local municipality. The Safer Roads Plan will go before the Township Board at their meeting on July 22nd, and then it will go back to the Safer Roads and, Safer Roads Task Force on July 28th. The Township Board will make a decision in August whether or not to include it on the November ballots, and if they do make the decision, then the voters will decide in November whether or not we're willing to step up to try to fix our roads. At our last meeting, the Chestnut Development was here with a concept plan for 18 lots on the nine acres on the south side of 59 between the Autumn Woods and San Marino Single Family Developments. The question, as you recall, is, would the township require the existing water main to be brought all the way across their property line and stubbed off to the west, and then also looped back around to the Autumn Woods Development? As you recall, the applicant essentially said that would be cost prohibitive, and so the, myself, the Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and the DBW Director are scheduled to sit down on Monday, once a couple of those guys are back from vacation, and really get into what the merits are of requiring those, and, and is it, is it feasible and warranted in this situation? And kind of, and have a recommendation ready for when that concept plan goes before the Township Board. We wanna know at this early stage whether this plan is, is feasible or not. As I mentioned, we're hoping to have a meeting with the Ordinance Review Committee prior to a meeting with this full group on July 24th. The Blight Newsense Ordinance that this group saw, I don't remember when, earlier, much earlier this year, hopefully will, it will be back before the Township Board at the July 22nd meeting with another opportunity to, to approve it. We've received our resumes for the vacant zoning inspector position. We're gonna start looking through those and see, see if there's any winning candidates in there. And the Planning Commission and the Township Board will be having another joint meeting later this year. The idea is that the joint meeting would be sometime after the Township Board has their annual retreat, but before the Township Board finalizes their strategic plan. So that means it would be September-ish. So, more to come on that, but sometime in September, we'll be having a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Township Board to talk about the strategic plan elements that will touch the Planning Commission, and scheduling, and what some of those planning elements will look like for the upcoming year. That is everything that is on my list of things to mention as part of my planner's report.
All right, thanks. Committee reports, comments, anybody?